Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 28, 2025 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. The prayer tonight will be coordinated by Alderman Royal.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Father, tonight we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom, your insights, and we welcome your presence among us this evening. We ask that you would guide us in your, in our discussions and in our decisions, and help us to seek what is best for all of our citizens. We trust in your perfect wisdom, and we ask that you would direct this meeting according to your will. You said that if we lacked wisdom, then let us ask you, and you would give it to us generously. We claim this promise as we start our meeting and trust in your promise. I pray that you would not only give us wisdom, but that you will also give us grace to respect those whose views are different and to work out issues that divide us. Help us to approach this meeting with an humble heart and to be open to hear and learn from one another. This is my prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you can't please stand, as we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, to its testicles.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please call a roll.
Alderman Creel?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
Present.
Okay, next up is item number three, approve the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board on item number three?
Mayor, if there are no adjustments to the agenda, make a motion that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second. Have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. It's the pleasure of the board on items number four through eight.
I'd like to have number seven pulled until each of the board members get a chance to fully understand why this is coming back before us.
Ms. Attorney, we approve the agenda. That's part of the consent agenda. Are we okay if we make a motion to pull a particular item from the consent agenda?
You can entertain a motion to pull an item from the consent agenda.
Okay, so Alderman Kinsey, can you say that one more time for me?
I'd like to pull item number seven.
Okay, that's a motion.
Until we can get further clearance on the purpose, because this is something that was passed in '23, and now it's '25, so that was during that budget cycle.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, is this a motion to continue item number seven or a motion to remove it from the consent agenda?
To remove it until we can get more clarity of what's going on. The reason why, when I first came on, we was receiving letters from the feds about problems with the CBD funding. I don't know if Foster has received any letters from them complaining that we need to spend the money. That's my reason.
If you'd like to move it up to the regular agenda, we've got staff here that can probably address some of your questions if you'd like.
I'd rather it's us for us to sit down and discuss this before we go live with it.
So Alderman Kinsey, I think, I think we need probably a date of when you would like to table this to. Would you want to try to table it to the next meeting? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Or a meeting after that? It doesn't have to be the next one.
I'm not sure of the timeframe right now. The thing that I'm asking for is that we sit down and get three-on-three to discuss this situation, and then the letters that they sent letting us know that we need to spend the money, where I can enveigh the things that I know that I can share, and then they can share back with us where we are, why we're going, and why this hasn't been done. That's it. That's where I'm at.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so he's got a motion. You got a motion to table it indefinitely, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, do we have a second? Okay, that motion dies for a second. Alderman Best, did you have something you'd like to say?
If Alderman Kinsey wants a little bit more information about this, we do have the department staff here tonight that can maybe bring you up to a point where something that maybe you want to hear or whatever, to something that's missing, but I, I'm fully aware of this discussion. I mean, Ms. Fullmore come before us numerous times, but it's, it's whatever the board decides to do.
Well, let me say this then, okay? Since you go on there, I'll go here. We have funding that, we've had problems with this for, ever since I've been in office, and we receive letters that we need to spend money. I don't see why we should spend money fixing bathrooms up or buying playground equipment when we have housing that needs to be fixed up. You change the rules to do things like that, or you change rules that you can't spend the money, so you put the money somewhere else? This is what I'm trying to understand. I don't know what everyone else understands, but I'm sharing with you what I understand, and maybe someone can explain that to me. I would love to have that.
Can we pull this and have it?
Thank you. That's what I'm trying to get them to do.
No, I was gonna say, and put it on the regular agenda so that staff can discuss it? Or can they discuss it on the consent agenda?
I'd, I'd like, if you want to make a motion to move it, at least we would get it on the, outside the consent agenda to discuss it.
Tonight.
Try that. I'd like to make the motion to remove it from the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda so we can have discussion.
Okay.
Tonight?
On me?
Tonight.
Tonight.
Yeah, there's, there's staff here to talk about it, right? Yeah.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Alderman Best, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item has been moved. Now, what is the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda less item number seven?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item seven, which is now part of the regular agenda.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Creel.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, consent agenda is approved. Next up, we will now consider item number seven. Consider adopting a resolution calling for a public hearing on a substantial amendment to the FY22 CDBG Annual Action Plan. Mr. Hughes?
I'm sorry? Yeah. We're gonna call Deasia Fullmore up, and she, she is the person that coordinates this program and should be able to provide some clarity. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Alderman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so this particular item, in 2022, we had a housing rehab program, and if you remember, that program was approved for, to be ran by nonprofits. Both of those nonprofits withdrew from the program because they determined they did not have the capacity to effectively run those programs. What that created for us was a problem where we have a bunch of money that is just sitting there that we need to spend. The paperwork that Alderman Kinsey is speaking of is every year HUD will send a letter to let you know if you're timely or not. We received a letter saying that we need to spend $177,000 by April. This is, is nothing to panic over. It happens every year. They send it out just to update where we are with our spending. So the best way to go ahead and meet some of that, that timeliness test is to spend your oldest pot of money. That oldest pot of money that we have right now are those 2022 funds that are just sitting there from the housing rehab program. Now, if you propose why that program was ineffective, in the past, that program was never ran by nonprofits. It was ran by McDavid and Associates. They are a third party that we would go through. They would administer the program. They understood CDBG. They had the capacity to effectively run the program. These nonprofits, they don't have the knowledge of CDBG, and as you all know, CDBG is very complicated to understand. So they got in it, they thought they could do it. Contractors felt that the money that we allocated per house, which was $10,000 per house, contractors didn't want to bid on it because it's too small of a job for them. I believe that the $10,000 was introduced looking at what we did in the past, but construction costs have gone up, so it doesn't really do anything for a house today. So what we're proposing through this amendment is to move some of that money, and not all of the money will be moved, because right now we're running an HVAC replacement program. So we're still serving our citizens through an HVAC replacement program. They can come apply, and if they're low income, they can still receive services. We're just removing, removing a portion from 2022 to help our 2023 projects, because what we found out when we got in our 2023 projects with the Village and the Omega Center is that we gave them a little bit of money, but we didn't even give them enough money to complete their jobs. And all of this is a result of the increased cost of construction and just everything that's associated with that. So moving this money will help us to, one, do what we said we were gonna do, which was help the Village and the Omega Center, and it will also help us to be timely yet again.
Question. Was that under a budget cycle year that, that was done under? That was just a promise that you made, that you can just go whenever you get the money, you can just give it to them? How was that decided on?
I want to make sure I'm understanding. How, how did we decide to give the money to Duffy Field Phoenix or who? Tell me exactly.
No, 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 no. The Omega Center and the Village.
Okay, so in 2020-
You said you promised them money, so I'm trying to understand what cycle-
Okay, I got you. I, I understand your question. So we didn't promise them money, we actually gave them money. Through the 2023 Annual Action Plan, you all approved funding going to Catholic charities, my sister's house, which is Ms. Bonita. All of them have been spending money. Tammy Dean over at the Village, they too spent money to acquire two parcels behind her building to develop a playground. The Omega Center, they haven't been able to even start their project because technically with CDBG funds, you can't start unless you, you can't start construction unless you have all the money you need, right? So we were able to acquire the two parcels with the Village under the 2023 money, but they haven't been able to complete the playground installed with the equipment just yet. The Omega Center has not been able to complete the ADA compliant bathrooms yet because they don't have enough money. So this would give them a chance to just get some extra funds to go ahead and complete the project. The reason why we need to complete the project is because if we don't, I mean, we face a timeliness issue, and HUD flags us for leaving our projects incomplete.
So what you're seeing is you giving them money that has not been spent?
If, if we leave it like we, if we just say tonight, if we say, well, we're not gonna give them anything, you're just leaving an incomplete project, and thus what, what's gonna happen is the money's gonna sit there and we'll get flagged for it.
But isn't money dispersed under budget years? This is what I'm trying to get you to explain.
Yes, so in 2025, we'll get a new allocation. Every year, we receive funds from HUD. We are an entitlement-
Let me, let me see if I can interpret this.
Okay.
So the money that has already been allocated to those two entities, you said we allocated money, but it wasn't enough to finish the project.
Correct.
Have we actually given them that money yet?
Some of it has been spent. So the Village has already spent a portion of the money that was allocated to her. So I believe we allocated $50,000 to the Village. They used some of that funding to go ahead and acquire the two parcels behind the building. So that phase of the activity is done, but the other part of the activity was for them to install playground equipment for the youth. That is the last piece that they need. They need the extra money in order to be able to do that.
Does that help at all?
A little bit.
Okay.
Foster, question to you.
Yes, sir.
When we remodeled the Omega Center, was the bathrooms included in that at that time? Because we spent a large amount of money then to do that.
Right. There were, there were some refreshments to, to that bathroom. I think this project called to expand it by adding multiple toilets and urinals in each one of those. We did not do a major renovation like that on the restrooms. The amount we spent was more to do work on the floors, painting, make sure the, the roof was secure, but there was a little bit of work on the bathrooms. I think some fixtures may have been replaced, yes.
Where I'm going at, later on, someone else is gonna come back and look at what we just done, and they're gonna want the same thing. So is this something that gonna be a new practice that we gonna continue to do?
So I'm gonna let Deasia talk about how did, how was it determined that these projects were selected? Do you have an advisory board that-
Yes.
Talk about that process.
So again, you all approved these organizations to receive funding in 2023. So this was done at the approval of the board, right? And what we did was we did a nonprofit application we put out, and if you are a nonprofit, it's gonna happen again this year, it's coming up for February, you are able to come to us and advocate for your nonprofit to receive funding. We look at the criteria, if you meet the criteria, we then say, hey, this organization wants this amount of money for this reason. If they meet the CDBG eligibility requirements, we can bring it forth to you all, and you all can approve that. So this is just something that was approved by you all to spread that money along that Broad Street corridor and Cedar Street.
And, and Alderman Kinsey, that is not how the program needs to continue with, with doing that. In, in the past, the city has, has chosen to allocate funds for sidewalks. One of the projects that was done was to put a basketball court up at Pleasant Hill, I'm, I'm sorry, at Pierce Park, and there's also an ability to pave streets and things like that. Funds could also be allocated to the Redevelopment Commission. So there are a variety of projects that could be done. Also, I believe in the last two years, we've allocated a certain amount, the maximum amount HUD will allow us to, to tear down houses, dilapidated houses as well.
And so when this was done in 2023, it was really commendable of the board, because it was the first year that I personally have ever seen us spread money the way we have to our nonprofits. So it was a good move to do it. The only thing we're facing now is, hey, we just didn't give two organizations enough to complete what we intended to complete. That's, that's really all.
So are they gonna use some of these funds to buy playground equipment?
Yes. Buy and install the, the playground equipment. And let me say this too, with these contracts, so just so everybody understands with CDBG, you have to pay federal wage rates. So let's say we want to give an organization $20,000. We can't be like, oh, well, we'll give, we'll let Bob do the construction and give him the $20,000. You have to pay federal wage rates, which almost doubles the contract price. That is a federal regulation that we have to abide by.
So are these individuals aware of that?
Yes, they are. They, Mr. Stewart of the Omega Center, he knew that, we only gave him about $35,000, and to be honest, that, that just wasn't enough. We kind of underestimated what it would take to install these ADA compliant bathrooms.
But why does it take so long to come back to, to amend a situation when you already knew the rules of the game?
I think, well, to be honest, when we got in it, we did all we can to try to get it done at the cost that we allocated, and then after we got into it and did further investigation, we just determined that we did not have enough. So it was simply an oversight.
Alderman Kinsey, and I want to make a comment about this. On the city side, we, we learned a lesson with this when we asked for funds for the Pierce Park Basketball Court. We priced that project out, and doing the normal construction, we could have built that for about $30,000. Because we had to follow HUD's guidelines with the prevailing wages, we couldn't touch it with $30,000, and it, that project ended up costing $65,000 or $70,000-plus thousand having to go through the HUD process. And, and it was wasted, to be quite honest with you. It was a waste of money for us to do it that way because of the prevailing wages.
You, you mentioned McDavid and Associates.
Yes.
That gentleman, I believe, used to come-
Mike, Mike Barnett, that's correct.
We don't utilize their services anymore?
No, and, and to be honest, in the future, if we're gonna run a housing rehab program, it would be best to connect with them again. They not only ran our program, but they run different programs throughout the state of North Carolina. I think the admin cost was a bit intimidating to the board in the past, but that admin money that we bring forth and advocate for is to effectively run these programs.
Any other comments?
I have a question also. With the housing rehab, again, did you mention potential to go in that direction again through the agency that you just mentioned? Because I have had so many requests-
Requests.
-from, from people whose houses need repair, and I'm aware of the nonprofits that was not able to follow through and what have you, and so, but the housing need is still there-
Is still there, yes.
-for repair. So I would certainly urge if, however, we need to address this to make sure that we can rehab some houses.
So I actually circled back. After I noticed that this is not gonna work, I circled back to them, and they had too many clients at the time. That's why they couldn't pick us up. So they recommended me to some other, other, I'm sorry, other agencies that could help us, but they, they had too many clients at the time too. I would like to circle back to them. If we do this program in the, in the future, I just want to make sure everyone understands why that admin money does have value, because it helps us to be able to run our programs.
So do you have any projection for the near future that we can rehab houses again, or you just have to contact these other entities to see where we can find someone to facilitate it?
Definitely. I think, I think going forward, we can definitely do that program again. I think we need to do, give it some time so we can go ahead and get caught up with spending these funds that are sitting there, but the next time that it comes forth, it would be best just to reconnect with McDavid and Associates for that program.
One final question. So when it comes to housing rehabilitation, there is no assistance for homeowners at this time?
At this time, we have an HVAC replacement program going. So if they have any heating and air issues, they can come see me, and I'm working that program by myself at this time. So the program even moves a lot slower because it's just me. I'm the only CDBG staff that we have right now. In the state, we have about three to four people who work on CDBG because of these regulations. So with it just being me, it does, we, we run a bit slower, but it's still open and residents can apply.
Thank you.
So you said you need help, huh? You hire, and I'll, I'll work with you.
I could use a little help.
The HVAC program-
I gotta have Alderman Best next. Alderman Best?
Deasia, so RCS is not a part of this program anymore?
No, they withdrew. Both RCS and Duffy Field Phoenix withdrew. Duffy Field Phoenix withdrew because they, the amount was too small, $10,000 per house. RCS withdrew because they didn't have staff. They had staff turnover, Zeb left, and they didn't have all the ladies over there. They don't, they don't know how to do the work write-ups. So when you rehab a home, with HUD, we have to send work write-ups to HUD, and they can't go out and diagnose something on someone's HVAC unit. They, they don't have the knowledge of that.
How, how many HVAC systems have you changed out so far? I think that's a wonderful program.
Um, thus far, we only have one person who's getting ready to receive services. We have about four people who are up to receive services.
How do you advertise that, to let folks know that's something that is available?
So initially, when we laid this program out, we advertised through social media, we advertised on our city's website. We need to put out something new now regarding the HVAC program that we have as it stands today.
Any other comments?
So, Ms. Fullmore, you're talking about $100,000 now?
So, I-
Are you talking about $100,000?
Yes, we have approximately $100,000 left to do HVAC replacement.
Okay. And also, I wanted to mention this to Alderman Kinsey, that I know at one point in time, you had the program set up to where residents could apply for this funding, but the problem was we didn't have enough residents applying for it.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So at this point, are you still getting our residents?
We, we are. We, we are.
Not for the HVAC, but I'm just saying for other repair, home repairs.
Yes, and so let me, other residents have come asking for repairs. I've connected them with Coastal Community Action. There was another Baptist on Mission, I think that's the name of the organization. So some people, even if I couldn't help them, I was able to get them some help from another nonprofit.
And yes, I just want to commend you on that, because some of the residents that I turned over to you, they did say that you was very helpful, and they did get connected with other agencies.
Thank you.
So, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments. This is certainly not the first time that this has come before the board. I've been on board since 2013. CDBG always seems to have its challenges.
It does.
You've got to be owner occupied in order to qualify. You've got to meet certain threshold for income. It seems to be a very arduous process, and I would remind the board back, we built some bus shelters, some very expensive bus shelters for carts, which is a county function, not a city function. We did the basketball court that the city manager just mentioned. We paid to move a house where Stanley White is sitting now, and I believe if I'm, if I'm correct, Redevelopment Commission still owns that house because of all the regulations that's tied in with CDBG, they can't dispose of the house right now. So I, I don't know that there's a, a right or wrong answer, but certainly what we've been doing for the past decade hasn't been working very well. Maybe that's a fault of this board. We don't spend enough time when the action plans come before us. But I have said this before, and I'll continue to say it, we have a Redevelopment Commission now. They should be the ones in charge of spending this funding. This is ideally what they should be doing. When we initialized the RDC, we talked about the fact that if they didn't have funding, they weren't gonna have support to do anything. This board stepped up, we hired an executive director, general fund pays for that, but this seems like a much easier answer than what we're doing right now, and let the Redevelopment Commission, who specializes in helping that community, continue to do that, and they would have the funds and resources to do so. Now, understand, there may be some governmental procedures that this board may have to approve that, but I think if you put the Redevelopment Commission in there somehow to have some say and, and inside that layer of decision-making, they're closer to the community to make those things happen. So that would be my suggestion, but as of right now, I'm one-sixth of this board, so.
Well, I mean, if you do that solely turn it over to the Redevelopment Commission, then how would that play with you?
Um, we are, Zeb and I work side by side, so we are already in conversation about what we can do to get some funds to the Redevelopment Commission. I think going forward, we, we haven't done anything bad. HUD has come forth saying we're one of the best cities. We haven't received any bad monitoring visits. We had a perfect monitoring, maybe like two years ago. HUD just came to meet with me, it was an informal meeting. My, the representative looked through the files, and they commended us on what we're doing here in the city. So I don't want anyone to get the wrong impression. We're doing a great job. I think going forward, I would just like to initiate carefully analyzing what is proposed, and maybe we just sit, sit for a minute and really evaluate with our HUD rep what we are proposing, and that should help prevent problems.
I appreciate that, and I think you personally do a great job.
Thank you.
I think we as a city can do better, because if you continue to put five and one-year plans together, and you constantly have to come back and find a new way of spending it because your original plan didn't work, then there was a problem with the original plan. But I think we do a great job with catching up and doing things like this, but we just need to be better on the front end, so.
I agree.
So now we're back to, still on item number seven. So the original item was to consider adopting, calling for a public hearing for the FY22 20, 22 CDBG Annual Action Plan. So what's the pleasure of the board on item number seven?
I'm prepared to move forward.
Is that a motion, sir?
Uh, if, well, do we need a motion to open the public hearing?
Uh, no, we're not, we're calling for the public hearing, not actually conducting the public hearing. So this is just a call for it, which will be on our next agenda.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution, so let's have a voice vote. Roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine, Consider Adopting Resolution to Request a Local Bill Exempting New Bern from the Provisions of Part Three, Subpart 3K of Senate Bill 382. Mr. Hughes.
We're going to turn this over to the city attorney to to explain this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, members of the board. It is my pleasure to give you a little bit of background information about Senate Bill 382. This was a piece of legislation that was passed by General Assembly in December of 2024. The long name for this legislation had to do with Hurricane Helene relief in the western part of the state. At the tail end of that piece of legislation is the piece that we're bringing before you tonight that has caused great consternation across the state. Imagine that there was a very specific factual scenario that required some intervention and perhaps our General Assembly overcorrected. The impact of this legislation that has been passed essentially negates local government's ability to change their zoning regulations. And what I mean by that is this piece of legislation restricts down zoning. So anytime you want to make a change to a zoning district, especially non-residential zoning districts, to change permitted uses, to add uses, to do anything that might create a non-conformity, now this piece of legislation requires that every citizen that owns property in that affected area has to consent in writing, which, as you can imagine, is very burdensome. What our colleagues across the state are recognizing is even that basic understanding is still being teased apart. School of Government is trying to wrap their arms around this legislation, how it applies in practical reality. And just to add another level of complexity to this legislation, it's retroactive. So local governments actually lost their ability to change their zoning regulations going back to June of 2024, even before the act was passed. So what is being presented to you tonight is a request to our local delegation to petition our representatives in Raleigh to exempt New Bern from this piece of legislation so that we can continue to implement zoning in the way that this board sees fit and certainly with the input of our citizens through the public hearing process. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And I believe that this is being done by several cities and municipalities across the region, not just us, correct?
Yes, sir. Virtually most of the local governments, cities, counties, towns are making similar requests.
I'll just make one comment because I've had some experience with this so far. I've seen good legislation over the years. I've seen some bad legislation over the years. I've seen some boneheaded legislation, and this would fall in the category of boneheaded. I don't know who got this added because I believe this is like one sentence on the last page of the Hurricane Relief Bill for the western part of North Carolina. But I hope to find out who got that added because I'd like to send them a letter of disappreciation for what they've done because this has put a tremendous burdensome on all the municipalities throughout the state. It was a pretty dumb move. So board have any questions or comments?
Question, comment? I mean, it it, on the face of it, it certainly appears that our esteemed legislators in Raleigh royally screwed up on this. So what are they doing to correct it? Because what we're being asked to do by asking for a waiver, for legislation to be passed to give us a waiver, as many municipalities appear to be doing, it's sort of the tail wagging the dog. What is the dog doing to correct the mistake that they have made?
That's a that's a great question, Alderman Pril. I will tell you that in our conversations with our colleagues that represent local governments, our representatives are being inundated with requests to do something. And I think what they're what is persuasive to our our delegations across the state are formal actions by municipalities expressing the difficulties that exist as a result of this legislation. So I I don't know what they're prepared to do in this moment, but I certainly know that support or disapproval by local governments is certainly going to be persuasive in the legislators figuring out what the right outcome should be.
If I'm not mistaken, Senator Brinson sits on the Local Government Committee in Raleigh. Does anybody know that for sure? I I'm not sure what committee he sits on, but I thought I saw somewhere where it was Local Government. So I'd be real curious as to whether or not, if he, it does in fact sit on Local Government Committee, whether or not that committee is addressing this issue and have some has made efforts to move this matter forward to get it corrected. I mean, I'd more of a rhetorical question unless somebody has talked to Senator Brinson to ask him that.
I have not.
You're right, he does sit on the board. You're right, he does sit on the Local Government.
Okay.
Yeah. Per, per newspaper and email.
I mean, I understand. I don't have a particular problem with what we're being asked to approve, understanding that this is just sending a request to our local representatives in Raleigh asking them to put forth legislation to exempt us from this bill that was passed. And again, it just, it's a backwards way of doing something. They, if they're not willing to admit that they may mistake, then don't admit it. Just correct it for the benefit of communities throughout the entire state.
Any other questions or comments?
I do. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Rue, in layman's terms, can you just tell us very briefly how this impacts the land use? What a news.
So we are doing a comprehensive update to our zoning map and all of our standards and looking at what is allowed where. And we are very much on hold right now until we have some direction on where this is going due to the fact if we take away even one use that is allowed in a zoning district, and I love to use the example of a vape shop, perhaps we want to take that use out of a zoning district. We would need written approval from every single owner in that district to do that. This is a massive unintended consequence. This was intended, in my belief, to eradicate a situation where a property owner had some buildings that were made non-conforming because the city proactively wanted to change zoning, which we have the right to do and we don't often take advantage of in the city of New Bern, and was connected with the right people and got this slid in a bill that had really good intentions right before holidays. We have worked very closely with our legal consultants and all of our neighborhood jurisdictions and sort of everyone is being advised that the best way to request that this is changed or taken away is to do exactly what our our legal counsel has just described to you and to ask to be exempted from it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's the pleasure of the board on item number nine.
If there's no more questions by the board, I make a motion to adopt a resolution to request a local bill exempting New Bern from provisions of Part Three, Subpart 3K of the SB 382.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, Consider Adopting Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Contract with Chris Dixon Land Clearing, Inc. for the 5777C Road Improvement Project. Mr. Bouchard.
Good evening, Mayor Odom, Board of Aldermen. Tonight, I'm recommending a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a land clearing contract to Dixon Land Clearing in the amount of $884,620. The scope of work is in support of the existing agreement we have with the state of North Carolina and CDOT to relocate our utilities, approximately seven miles of utilities between Thurmond Road and Lewis Farm. The cost of this is fully reimbursable by NC DOT per that relocation agreement that I just mentioned. And we have a project fund that was previously established to account for these expenses and these reimbursements. Be happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Charlie, the, we we had received, I think it was four bids
Yes, sir.
For this project, what you're, the one you're recommending was the highest bid that was received. Were the other three, which were considerably less, were they just non-responsive in some categories? And that's why you're rejecting them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The complexity of the work, the wetlands mitigation, the amount of manpower, the type of equipment that they needed, the experience with NC DOT projects, scheduling is over a couple of years' time and at the pace of NC DOT. So to really factor all that in, some of those bidders did not. They they did not consider those things when we sat down and talked to them. So we went back to Dixon. They have experience with NC DOT projects. They helped us on the 43 Connector Project that you all have seen recently. So we're very confident that they can accomplish the work.
Okay.
Only question I have, Charlie, is since it is reimbursable, I assume that we've checked all the boxes to make sure that even though we're going with the high bidder, that it's still going to be fully reimbursable?
Yes, sir. We've exhausted this with NC DOT and it's reimbursable.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
If there's no more questions by the board, I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Chris Dixon Land Clearing, Inc. for the 5777C Road Improvement Project.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Kenzie.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. So the boards are aware items number 11 through 14 can all be considered at the same time if you would like to do so. I'll read them all and Mr. Childs will be making his way to present each one of these items. It may save us a little bit of time if we consider them all at the same time if they're going to be unanimous. So item number 11 is Consider Adopting a Resolution to Accept Ownership and Maintenance of a Portion of East Front Street Within the New Bern River Station Development. Mr. Childs.
Yes, we were approached by the developers of this roadway requesting acceptance of approximately 370 feet of East Front Street. We have performed a built-to-standards inspection and have confirmed that this street is constructed to meet the city of New Bern street standards. I would like to let you know that should should you approve the acceptance of this street, the fire code that is listed in the in the memo will be applicable due to the no turnaround on this street and the length of the street and the height of the building. So there'll be no parking allowed on either side.
Board have questions or comments on number 11? All right, number 12 is Consider Adopting an Ordinance to Amend Section 70104 Three-Ways and Four-Way Stop Intersections Established in Section 7099 Stop Intersections.
Yes, should you accept the 370 feet of East Front Street, it'll be necessary to amend Section 70-104 Three-Way, Four-Way Stop Intersections to include the intersection of East Front Street and Queen. It will also require Section 70-99 to be amended to remove the stop intersection that's existing at that intersection.
Board have questions on item number 12? Okay, item number 13 is Consider Adopting an Ordinance to Amend Section 7045 Installation of Traffic Control Lights.
As we have completed the installation of the traffic signal at Broad and Middle, it is necessary to include it in 70-45 Installation of Traffic Control Lights as an authorized intersection traffic signal.
Any questions on that item? And last is item number 14, Consider Adopting an Ordinance to Amend Section 7099 Stop Intersections.
With including the inner the traffic signal intersection at Broad and Middle, it necessitates amending 70-99 to remove the two stop signs that are listed on Middle at the Broad intersection.
Any questions on item number 14? I just have one question on item number 11. City manager, myself, and I think Alderman Pril, we met with a resident, I believe, that's in the back that lives in the River Station Development. And he had some concerns about not being able to park. City manager, I believe, if I understood you correctly today, you said that legal counsel said that when a road is constructed to city standards and they ask it to be accepted, we legally have to accept the road, even if that means there will be some things such as no parking on the street, which would be a burden to the homeowners. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Yes, sir. That that is our advice. When developers build to the standards that we set, there is a presumption that if you do so, those the liability will ultimately transfer to the city. If if we deviate from that in some way, it certainly calls into question going further whether developers will choose to build to our standards. And I don't think that's a a pathway this board is inclined to go down.
Okay, just want to clarify that. So what we would be looking for, board, if there's no further questions or discussion, would be a motion to approve items number 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Some move?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. George, next up is item number 15, Appointments. And we have fill the bike and pedestrian advisory committee. Alderman Royal, one for the Board of Adjustment.
I have one, yes.
Okay, very good.
I received a notification from Ms. Ashley Howell, who would like to serve on that on the Board of Adjustments to fill the vacancy until the term expires June 30, 2025. And I'd like to nominate her for that for that board.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for Ms. Ashley Howell.
Howell, yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, she is now appointed. And then we have three for the MSD Advisory Committee, Michael Rains for the Professional Services category, Gretchen Dupeza for the Residential category, and Mike Lentz for the Restaurant category. What's the pleasure of the board on those?
Let me ask you a question, please. Brenda, you you've been notified each of these and they all are willing to serve again?
That's correct.
Okay. Mayor, if that's the case, then I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Michael Rains to Professional Services category, Gretchen Dupeza for Residential category, and Mike Lentz for Restaurant category to the MSD Committee.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to offer some some comments.
Sure.
When this board took action a year or so ago to, if you will, reconstitute the Municipal Service District Advisory Committee, we had a number of applicants express interest in being considered to be members of the Advisory Committee. Our selection was made, terms of office were assigned to each of these individuals. Part of that discussion was that, given the the number of taxpayers, MSD taxpayers that had expressed interest in participating on the Advisory Committee, that there would be opportunity in the future that as current terms expired, that there would be consideration given to those that were not selected initially to give them the opportunity to become members of the Advisory Committee. It's unfortunate, I think, that the motion that was just made totally ignores the interest of a number of other interested parties and just establishes a precedent of whoever's on a board or committee just automatically gets reappointed without any consideration. given to any other candidate that would like to be, that would like to participate. So, I fully intend to vote no on this motion. We have a number of other people, some which are in the audience tonight, who would like to be considered. I would like to have a discussion about any of these other individuals who are eligible to fill any of these three slots, and then at a later date, we'll go through, I guess, the same process we went through before, taking a vote to identify, potentially identify, some new members that might, might be selected to serve on the advisory committee.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to express that I understand Alderman Pril, and I agree that when we established the committee, the thought was for rotation, and I'd like to also see who else is willing to serve. Of course, if there was no one else willing to serve, then the continuity is great, but in the meantime, I'd just like the opportunity to look at the eligibility and see what other citizens would like to serve through rotation.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to reappoint the three members that were listed. Let's have a roll call vote, starting with Alderman Pril.
Alderman Pril?
No.
Alderman Royal?
No.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
I have to say, give other citizens an opportunity, so I'm going to say no.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. So, what is the resolution state if members' terms have expired and there's not someone to reappoint them? Do they continue to serve until they're reappointed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody like to make a different motion?
Would that motion reflect what we just said about taking a look at the rotation and the possibility and eligibility of other?
So, the motion, I believe, was to reappoint the three that are, terms have expired, that are eligible for reappointment, and it failed three to three. So, there could be a subsequent motion made to open it back up and look at other candidates. If you'd like to do that, it would require, obviously, a majority.
Then I would like to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make that motion, that we will look at the eligibility of other residents and see if there's further rotation to give others an opportunity to serve.
Okay, have a motion and...
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries, four to two. Anything else, any other appointments?
Just for clarity, can I ask a question?
Sure.
That motion said to look at eligibility of the residents, are you only looking at the residential seat?
No.
The applicants for that?
For clarity, I was looking at eligibility of other...
Property owners, for all three?
Right, who qualify to serve, yes, sir.
How do you want to go about doing that?
Looking at the pool that we already have, and Alderman Pril said that there were people in the audience, and whoever might come forth, if we make that known to those who qualify, to just simply say that we're open to receive those who are available to serve, who would like to serve, who qualify to serve, or choose from the pool that we already have on hand. I believe Ms. Brenda sent that out to us, that there were others also when we first started this journey, so we could take a look at those that are already submitted applications, and if there are those who have not submitted, then we open the door for them to do so.
Are you good with that, Mr. Attorney? On that, the motion was for the residents, but I believe...
I didn't mean residents.
She meant property owners.
Yes.
Did everybody understand property owners when they were voting on the motion?
Everybody understand that, it's not just the residential category. It would just be the four in the affirmative anyway, so as long as the four, I understood.
I'm seeing heads shake, so...
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. Any other appointments tonight?
Mayor, just a question for the city manager. Foster, a while back, I mean, we had a vacancy come on the Community Development Advisory Committee, and I'm a little fuzzy on my memory, but we did not, intentionally did not take any action on that. We were waiting for a while to, I think, determine something, and I forget what it was.
Yeah, the...
But I see that, I mean, that position is still vacant, so I guess the question is, do we need to look at filling that?
The entire board was put on pause.
Yeah, I'm going to refer to the clerk, she's got that information probably in front of her.
We've had discussions with the city attorney, it looks like that board from the time of inception, for the last six or eight years, has been the same members, there's been no turnover, and there really should be a rotation of members there, so we're looking at getting that more realigned.
Okay.
So that it can be established similar to the other boards and commissions, where there's a limit to consecutive terms.
Okay, so we're still working on it?
We're working on it.
Okay. So, that's all.
Thanks. Any other appointments? Okay, attorney's report, number 16.
Thank you, mayor. As you all might recall, at your December 14, 2024 meeting, you all, this board approved a lease between Craven County and yourselves involving 408 Hancock. In that lease, there was an insurance provision that contained a typographical error that matters. In this case, the number for the amount of liability insurance was higher than it needed to be by one digit, so I'm bringing this matter back to you all tonight for your consideration to approve the same lease that you've already approved involving 408 Hancock Street, except instead of requiring $3 million in liability insurance, you required $2 million, and I think that the county, that was their intention when this matter was brought to you.
Board have questions?
Who is the lease with?
Craven County.
I think it was described as a typo, typically two million is the standard, but it was put in for three, and that was going to cost the county extra $26,000 for an insurance just for that. It was basically the same situation we had when they leased that building for the library, they're leasing it now for the senior center, so it was really just a typo. If the board doesn't have questions, I believe the attorney's looking for a motion to approve the amended lease with the corrected language.
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else, mayor?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, next up, the city manager's report.
Few updates for you, earlier this afternoon, we received notification that Verizon and T-Mobile phone, mobile phone customers were not able to call city offices. The 911 service has not been affected, but our staff has been working with those providers to try to get things squared away, so as of a few minutes ago, that issue has still not been resolved, but if they need to call 911, they will be able to get through. I wanted to give you a little follow-up on winter storm Enzo that occurred last week. Thankfully, we did not have many accidents, we did not lose any power as a result of that storm. I want to commend our police and fire departments, our electric utility, public works and water resources departments for working extra duty to make sure that all of our utilities and infrastructure were working properly. We received several positive comments from the public about clearing the roads, the city streets, in a very good manner, so thank you to the staff for that. Also, for those that were able to attend Stanley White Recreation Center grand opening yesterday, we had a large crowd for that, we're really excited about this new facility and look forward to the offerings that will be provided by the Parks and Recreation staff. I've put something in front of you for election update, the board of elections did send some information to me today, so as a reminder, the filing period starts July 7th, it will go through July 18th. The municipal election dates are scheduled for Tuesday, October 7th. If there is a runoff, that will be on Tuesday, November 4th. So, on the pricing, the estimate for cost for the October election with the early voting option would be $47,660. Without the early voting option, the price would be approximately $33,960. So, if there is a runoff election in November, the cost would be another $47,660 with early voting, without early voting, that would be $33,960. So, in our conversations with Susan Williams with the board of elections, my comment to her was, can you do early voting at one election but not the other? And she cannot answer that. She reached out to the legal counsel of the state board of elections, and they are looking to see if that can be, if that can occur, but she did not want to give any comment on that, so I don't know if this is going to be an all or all or nothing. So, if the board wants to proceed the way we have been with early voting, the total cost for the election, if there is a runoff, could be approximately $95,320. Without a runoff, it could be about $67,920. The minimum time for early voting would be, for the October elections, it would start September 18th, it would go weekdays from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then on the last Saturday, October 4th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. If there's a runoff, the early voting would start on October 16th, weekdays only from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then the last Saturday, which will be November 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. If the board chooses to opt out, we will have to come back with a resolution from this board and send that to the board of elections. Happy to try to answer any questions you may have for this.
Board have questions?
Foster, when you just said that the board decides to opt out, I'm not sure, I'm following...
Opted out of early voting.
Early voting, okay, okay.
If you're fine with all this, then we'll let the board of elections know and everything will proceed.
Is it within our purview that we can minimize early voting from two weeks to one?
So, the dates that you have right here, those are the minimum dates that they have provided us.
Is that a two-week period?
Thirteen days.
Thirteen.
I counted it out.
Thank you.
I just have a, sort of a discussion question to ask the board, given the fact that there's one piece of this that we're still waiting on some direction from the board of elections, so just what, if anybody is willing to offer their thoughts about that if we had the ability of having the early voting for the October 7th election, but if we could then eliminate the early voting if there was, if there was a runoff, that if we had that option, would we want to consider that? I'm just curious as to whether anybody has any thoughts about that.
My question is, if we have a runoff, it's usually going to be just for that ward, so why is it this, I mean, going to just open one ward unless it's the mayor's runoff?
It does, early voting is at specific sites regardless of the ward. Early voting is at downtown, right? And do they have other locations? I know in the general election, it was open at other places. For the early voting, it's one location.
Yeah, but still, that's not my, that's not my point. My point is, is that it's cost $47,000 to have a citywide election opening several poles, correct?
That's correct.
If you have a runoff, it's just going to be in Ward 3, for example, which would mean you'd open one pole, so why is it the same amount of money?
So, this is an estimate, they don't have a crystal ball to read if there will be a runoff, so they're just giving us an estimate. Obviously, I think things would change based on whether or not there is a runoff or how many races there could be for that.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd like to suggest that we wait until all the information is gathered and go from there.
What other information are you seeking from the board of elections, Mr. Hughes?
They're going to let me know whether or not you can do early voting at one election and not at another, or if it was all or nothing with early voting, that's all we were waiting on.
Are we working on a deadline in terms of making a decision on this?
So, we have time for this. I'd like to get this resolved within the next, within the next two meetings, and that's plenty of time for this.
Okay, so, yeah.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
All right, item number 18, new business, starting with Alderman Pril.
Just one item, again, I'd like to just commend the entire city staff for a job well done, given the rather unusual weather that we had in this area over the past week. Certainly, a challenge for the staff, given that the weather event was definitely out of the ordinary for this part of the country, so just like to commend everything that they did. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Royal?
None tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderman Astor?
Alderman Pril said what I needed to say, city staff did a wonderful job, and I appreciate everybody out there working in the cause, nothing else.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I do. I'd like to propose to the board, I visited New Bern Memorial Cemetery, and the shelter there is just beautiful, and I've contacted city manager Foster Hughes in reference to giving me an estimate for that shelter. It was just a little too much that I think is needed to put into a shelter that was like about $78,000, and I wasn't really seeking that, that big of a shelter for that amount of money. I want to have the Evergreen Cemetery Shelter replace the current shelter there, it's an ISO, and I, Mr. Hughes guided me to take a look at some of the other shelters in the other parks, and the one at Fort Totten and Henderson Park is basically about the scale that I want to go with, and it was coming in at around about $50,000. I think this would be a great upgrade to Evergreen Cemetery, and I had some conversations prior with Alderman Royal, she and I both was on the same accord about that cemetery needed some, a facelift, and she so courteously, you know, volunteered to let that funding come out of her ARP funds, and that's where I want to go with that, and hopefully the board will approve that as we, as I seek that project. As I said, it's, the estimate that I got from Mr. Hughes is like $50,000.
So, a shelter to be constructed at Evergreen Cemetery for $50,000 and the funding come out of the Ward 2 ARPA allocations?
That is correct.
Okay, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And just a reminder, all of these come back before the board officially as a budget amendment procedurally wise, so we'll see that again sometime.
I do have something else.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say to Alderman Royal, I am very grateful to you, your support means more than you know, and I'm quite sure that the citizens of our city that utilize that cemetery would greatly appreciate it as well, so thank you. And that was it. No more to echo off of previous statements by, to board members, that I just want to thank our city staff, our employees, it's our greatest assets, we couldn't do it without you. You worked this through. You worked us through this storm and everybody, you know, we did have some minor casualties, but I just appreciate all of you.
Is that all? Okay. The only thing I have, I apologize to Alderman Bass and Royal. I'll be out of town Thursday night, and I believe you're having a town hall meeting at the Pleasant Hill Community Center at six o'clock. Some good topics of discussion. I will not be in town Thursday night, but congratulations and hope you have a great event. Do we need a closed session?
Not tonight, mayor.
Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.